I was able to find a seat because there were a lot of people here. And I'm just grateful to see so many people who are willing to come out and engage on important issues like education with some of our school board members. My name is Ben Horstley, I'm the superintendent of Granite School District, and I think I'm on my 267th day, something like that. So I'm a little fresh and wet behind the ears. I worked for three different superintendents in Granite School District before I was appointed by the board this last July. So we have a couple of board members here. We have our board president, Nicole McDermott. We have Connie Burgess. We have Clark Nelson over here. And Julie, where'd you go? You're hiding over here. We're also recording this, and I think we're posting this on social media and our website. So if you have friends or family that just weren't able to enjoy the refreshments and the good company tonight, then feel free to point them to that resource. We're going to be respectful of your time. There's just two real rules of engagement here before I introduce some additional people. And that is, I have no presentation here. I've just brought some slides in case there were specific questions that I could be helpful in answering. So I'm going to turn the time over to you all in here in a second. But we started doing these town halls back when Dr. Bates was our superintendent and I worked for him. And we used to kind of go around the district and do a handful of these a year in respective networks. And the idea was to engage our taxpayers who don't necessarily have kids in schools. We get to hear from our patrons a lot, right? But we don't always get to hear from those who are helping funding the tax bill. And so it's important, especially this time of year, we're adopting a budget. There's a number of issues going on in the community. We just finished the Let's Set session a few weeks ago, to be able to have an opportunity to come and discuss those things and how they're impacting us and how they're going to impact you potentially. So I'm grateful for the opportunity. We scheduled these out last fall, knowing that we wanted to redo this, to do this again and bring these back. And you'll be able to, we'll have more of these opportunities in next fall as well and into subsequent years. This is an ideal opportunity for me to come in here from a key stakeholder group and to be able to answer and address questions one-on-one, for our board members to be able to hear thoughts or concerns. There's a couple of other people I want to introduce you to. We have Luke Allen, he's from our communications department, he's recording right now for us, so we can put that on later. We have Todd Harpers, our business administrator, he's essentially our CFO. And Mitch Ners over here is our chief of staff. And Jim Christiansen is the principal of Olympus is running around here. I do see Matt Ryan, the newly appointed principal up at Eastwood for next year. It's nice of him to come in and be with us tonight. And then we also have Representative Carol Moss, our esteemed colleague from the legislature, who's here to join us as well too. So I'll be referring the both of the meeting over to her now. And, oh dang, maybe later, maybe later. Yes, right. We're going to be, since you have your time, I'm going to try to be prompt. When we did this the other night in our Westside community, I let one group of people kind of monopolize the meeting. So the first rule is, we're going to try to be prompt, I'll try to answer your question, we're going to try to spread it out and make sure everybody has an opportunity to get their question answered, right? And so if you do have a really urgent matter or something that's going to take a little bit more time, then I'm going to put my email address up here after the meeting's over, and you can reach out to me anytime. And I'll give you my phone number too. And let's find some additional time one-on-one to be able to meet and visit and discuss that concern that's going to be a bigger, longer concern. Hopefully, we can address matters that are a little more prevalent in the broader community that you might have. And always open suggestions. So that's rule number one, let's try not to monopolize the time and make sure we get everybody has an opportunity. The second question is, if you are here and you want to talk about an individual student issue, I can't address private student matters in front of a public body. So I would need you to follow up with me and stop the time individually to discuss that issue, so that we can make sure you get taken care of and those issues and concerns addressed in appropriate time outside of the public sphere, because there are obviously privacy laws that prevent me from discussing individual student matters. So with that, does anybody want to kick off our meeting with the first question?
So why are we here?
Why are we here? Well, when I introduced earlier, when I worked for Dr. Bates, starting 17 years ago, we started doing these town halls on a regular basis. It's an opportunity to gain feedback on how we're doing, how we're providing support to your schools, matters of budget, other questions or concerns you might have. So many of the people here are footing the bill whether they have kids in our schools or not. So when I became superintendent...
I love that close to any of the five schools in the area.
This meeting was scheduled long before our PAC study, and this was just an opportunity for us to hold a regular town hall within each of our respective communities again. So this is just one-on-one time with me and the superintendent and some board members.
So when do we know about the five schools that you're thinking about?
We can talk about that if you'd like to ask about it.
We can.
Who will here ask questions about the PAC study, the population and boundary study questions? Okay, well, let's go ahead and talk about that. I've got some slides prepared, but I'm not going to do the full presentation. If you go to www.granitschools.org, there is a boundary study link on the homepage, and there is a ton of information there from population tables from the last 20 years and into the future, what's projected. There's videos from the previous meetings we already held in the community, and you can see schedules of other events and other activities that we'll be doing. So in the process right now, we just opened up the study in February, right? We say we're studying this area. We announce that to everybody, but to be fair and equitable and make sure that we're open-minded to any potential suggestion or concern, we study an area. We don't come in and say, this is what we're going to do. We want to come in, tell people about the problem and the challenge that we're faced with, and then start to solicit feedback and comments. We've received over 400 comments thus far from our meetings that we've held, and we have a few more meetings to take care of in individual school community councils, and we'll continue to meet as appropriate. Steve Hogan's our director over that process, and he's the one who runs those meetings and process for us. So the next step in that process is to converge a parent and teacher committee that will then inform decision-making for the district. Because I don't live in your respective community, and a lot of the people, a lot of our teachers and employees do live in this area, right? But we need to make sure that we're getting meaningful feedback in terms of those decisions before that population analysis committee makes a formal recommendation to the board next fall. So you'll see in June, in the next coming weeks, that committee will be formed with parents, two parents from each community and a teacher from each community, and they will get to have some say in decision-making, and we'll be listening, providing additional information, providing information on questions they might have. That's kind of the next step in the process, is to really dig into the weeds on the challenges that we're facing. One of the things that they're going to look at is this, and I'm happy to pass this around, this is also on our website, this is a 140-page report given to us in March of this year from MGT. They're a company out of Florida that is an independent demographer. So we paid them some money to come and do an independent analysis on population study for our schools. They did this five years ago for us, and we utilized that data on where they anticipated our school populations would be for the last five years. And their data was pretty spot-on. So we asked them to do another five-year look. They won't go further than that. They want to be able to guarantee their work and be as accurate as possible, and really, there's so many factors in how demographers do their work, that really anything past five years is, you're looking in a snow globe, right? You get shaken up, it's not, it's kind of foggy, right? You can't really figure it out. So this report details that Granite School District in its peak in heyday was at 78,000 students, district-wide. We kind of leveled out around the 68,000 range when I came to the school district, and in that time period, we're down another, we're down to 50, we'll be at 53,000 students next year, okay? We're declining about 2% to 3% of students every year because of declining birth rates in this area. And not just this area, pretty much the whole of Granite School District. We're a mature school district, right? We're old. We've been around since 1904, right? And so this area, whether it's Holliday, Mill Creek, South Salt Lake, West Valley City, the main factor is declining birth rates. We just don't see as many young families in these areas anymore. And the other major factor is that frankly, families can't, young families can't afford homes in this area. So that's our enrollment trend, MGP, MGT, the Independent Demographer, and I'll pass this around, you guys can look at it. It has data sets for every school in Granite School District. And again, that's available on the website, anybody can look at that information, 140-page report. You can see that they've been pretty true from our peak, 78,000 back in the 90s. 2015, we were, we plateaued for the last, since really 2005, we've been hanging around 68,000 kids, and now we're at 53,000 kids, starting next year, okay? So what's the other contributing factor? Young families cannot afford homes in this area. Even in some of our areas like West Valley City, people are selling homes, 200-square-foot Ramblers for $500,000, and they're moving where? To North Davis Weaver County or Utah County. Don't ask me why anybody would want to go to Utah County. But they can get a 4,000-square-foot home there with a whole quarter acre lot for a whole lot cheaper than the housing costs in this particular area. Mill Creek City and South Salt Lake City have put in over 10,000 new units of housing, apartments, two, three-bedroom, townhomes, and our population continues to decline because our young families cannot afford a $2,000 a month, two-bedroom apartment, right? And so that is actually the other primary factor that's causing population decline. So we see declining birth rates and high housing prices, and charter schools having an impact on our student populations, right? And so the challenge is, is that some of our schools in this area have not only, they're attracting some students from outside of their boundary population, but open enrollment laws in the state of Utah allow parents and families to be able to go to any school they want as long as there's capacity, right? And so we have to honor those rules and laws. Skyline High School attracts over 1,000 of its student population from outside of Granite School District boundaries or other boundaries within, outside of Granite School District and outside of Skyline boundaries. Wasatch Jr. is about 40% open enrollment. So they're attracting a lot of students from outside of those areas, yet those populations are still declining overall. And our boundary, the actual inboundary schools, there's one of our schools in this area that has 120 kids that live in the boundary in and of itself, okay? So the question then becomes, how small is a small school? And it used to be, I think a lot of people equate small schools to smaller class sizes, but that's not how we allocate those resources. We take the total number of students, divide it by 27.25, and we allocate that many teachers. So a school like, let's see, just directly east of us, Oak Ridge Elementary, on the other side of the freeway, it has, was allocated for next year because of its projection, eight and a half teachers. What that means is, they either have to subsidize with some of their own funding that comes directly to them for another half teacher, but they're still going, even with nine teachers in six grades, eight through five, you're going to have some split classrooms, right? That's not good for kids. It's not great for teachers to be able to have supervised, and it's not a great use of our resources in terms of using the economies of scale to our benefit. So in Granite School District, we'd love for all of our schools to be between two to four teachers per grade level. That gives parents lots of options, in case one teacher isn't really working out, there's another option to go to. So as we work through this process, there's a number of factors that go into small schools that we have challenges with, and I'm happy to answer specific questions about that. We won't get to any final actual options until we've gone through the public input process and really listen to parent guidance and consideration. So we'll take things off the table in June and really hone in, narrow the scope of the search of the study, and then in the fall and September, we'll actually have some proposals developed by our parent committee that the whole public can then make comment on. The board won't make the final decision until at least November and December.
I live near the now-closed Twin Peaks Elementary School. And of course, it's just one of several that are closed. And I see there's a third-party tenant using the building for some duration, perhaps five years. Which I think is a great way for the district to be in a wait-and-see mode, what's going to happen in six years. So my question, does the district receive pressure from land developers to acquire the lands of current closed schools and to redefine that demographic in that area? And what is the, what's the modus operandi of the district when that occurs?
This is a great question.
A modification to that would be, with existing schools, is there pressure to shrink the sports field, to give up a part of the land to a land developer, and they want to put it in and say, I call this a...
Yeah. Everybody heard his question, or should I restate it? We're good? I got my teacher voice on, or?
Yeah.
You want me to restate it?
Some of you are as well.
Me either, I got hearing aids on, I got them cranked up all the way. So his question is, he lives near Twin Peaks Elementary, which closed a few years ago. I think that was our 2022 study. And funny thing that you bring that up, I'll tell you that in a second. His question is, what do we do with the land? We're renting that facility out to a third party, was his question. What do we do with our land? What is the law applicable to that? What are our plans with these properties if and when schools are closed? So this is an excellent question. Everybody else can hear me okay, right? Okay, good, good, good. So with respect to that, as a school district, really since I've been here, which was 2008, in 2009, Granite High closed, right? And we went through the process of following the law to surplus that property or sell that property to South Salt Lake City. They tried three different times to purchase that property, both of their bonds that they put on the ballot to purchase that property, they wanted to turn it into a city hall and their campus, their city campus, and maintain some of the historic features of the older building, while most of it needed to be torn down. There were some cool features of that facility, right? And maintain the open space, right? So with respect to that, both of their bonds failed by single-digit votes, right? And so it was pretty split within their city whether to raise taxes to purchase that property. By state law, we can't just give it to the city, because it wasn't just South Salt Lake residents who purchased that property, it was the taxpayer base of the whole district that purchased that property. But we have to convey it at a fair market value, and municipalities, if we choose to surplus or sell property, always get first red refusal on those properties. So if we were choosing to sell property, we always have to go first to the local city, and we'd also include the county on that. So we have sold, we have not sold any properties since that time. We've actually maintained all of our properties with the exception of Canyon Rim Academy, which was a close school way back, and we actually sold it to the charter schools there. And I'm going to just call it out, I wasn't superintendent, and that was a mistake. We shouldn't have done that. And again, there's a philosophy with our current Board of Education that the one thing they're not making more of is what?
Land.
Giddy up. So with respect to that, we feel like there's a stewardship responsibility for our communities, that we work with our local community partners. Spring Lane was closed as well. We're going to be demoing that building here shortly, and the city is turning that into a park. So we're entering into a long-term lease with Holliday City, so we have access to the property 30, 40 years from now, and we needed another school down the road. But they're going to have this great asset in their community in terms of a park. We've looked at some other options with Mill Creek City, and a couple of other properties that were no longer using as schools, Roosevelt Elementary got rebuilt to another location, and there's, they wanted to come in and potentially put it in a dog park there. We've looked at some options there. We've looked at some other housing options that we can partner with the municipality, but I got to tell you, that would be only in very certain circumstances with some of our smaller parcels. Most of these parcels, we're looking at just maintaining and, or working with the municipality to maintain the open space. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Very good.
When you said, you mentioned Canyon Rim Academy, and Granite District shouldn't have done what they did. What do you think you should have done?
We should have retained the property.
And would you have let them have a school still on it?
We could have entered into a longer-term agreement with that charter school, but that is not our school. And so we basically just turned over our property to our competition, and they continue to take kids from our schools.
Well, yeah, I remember that.
So that was a little bit foolish and short-sighted on our part.
They wanted to keep the school, and so...
Yeah, yeah.
But you wouldn't have kept the school then?
No. The facility needed to be upgraded, and we did not want to pay for it to be upgraded. And this was in the midst of our 2009 bond. We were going to put air conditioning in all of our schools at that point in time, that was part of the bond, as well as rebuilding this school and Ranger High School, that was on that bond. And at that point in time, we didn't need the property anymore, they wanted us to come and put air conditioning in their building, and it's not our school. So we weren't going to use our taxpayers' dollars to upgrade that facility, so at that point in time, they said, well, can we buy it from you? And the decision was made to sell the property at that time.
Well, seems like people really appreciate Canyon Rim since, so maybe it's a good...
Yeah. I'm sure they're happy, by all, by any stretch of the imagination, I think they're very pleased. So, but if I'm Rosecrest Elementary or Eastwood, and families continue to go to Canyon Rim, even though Rosecrest and Eastwood are outperforming it, to me, that was silly of us, that was a little short-sighted. So I'm willing to admit that we might have made a mistake on that front. Okay, Carol? Sorry, Representative Moss, esteemed legislator from the Utah House of Representatives.
As you know, I taught here for 33 years, but not here, next door. I am very lucky to speak. Has the 267 discontinued collective bargaining, and now with, you know, their accounting, signatures and so on? Is that, and I know there was a slight teacher salary increase for him by the other legislature, but is there going to be collective bargaining this year? I mean, since that's in the mode without knowing if the...
Yeah.
...it was issued on the ballot, so what's going to happen with collective bargaining this year?
Very good. So HB 267, if you didn't hear the question, was a legislative bill that banned collective bargaining by government entities. And so we're obviously a government entity, and we would no longer be able to go and have a negotiation with our teachers' union or our education support professionals, our bus drivers, some of those folks in, under that bill. So they went out, the teachers' union, with a bunch of police unions, fire, uh, fire...
And volunteers.
Volunteers went out and gathered over 300,000 signatures. You need 140 to put it on the ballot. It cannot be put on the ballot in an odd year, so it would have to wait until Ju, uh, fall of 2026. So if the signatures get verified, I read this morning that they have certified signatures in five of the 15 senate districts that they need to certify signatures for. So they have 10 senate districts to go. We'll see if they get their signatures, but if they have 300,000, that's, that's pretty good, right? So if that were to happen, the idea is that this law would be put on pause for implementation until fall of 2026, when the broad public could vote on that legislation.
So you can't...
So we can collectively bargain this year. So we, we proceeded this year as if the law was still in place, and frankly, the law doesn't go into effect until May 7th, with or without signatures. So we have, this is a member of our collective bargaining team over here. He spent the last few of his Mondays with the Granite Education Association in full-day negotiations. And we had an executive session on Tuesday night to discuss what that looks like, and we continue to work through that process. Given the nature of the circumstances and the political environment, I'd much rather continue to collaborate with our association at this point in time, in good faith, and we'll see what happens with the law. But regardless of what happens with 267, whether it's defeated or not, it's in my best interest to make sure that we have happy, healthy, and teachers that feel valued and appreciated and want to come to work in a great school district. Here's another reason why Granite School District shouldn't split, because I know some people have presented that as an option. Granite School District is one of the few districts that's self-funded by virtue of our size. We are a self-funded insurance program. We don't put that out to a private company, even though it's managed that way. So our, our employees have access to a variety of health plans, but it's all funded by within. So that, our insurance premiums this year will go up, what percent?
How do you even three-tenths of a percent?
Three-tenths of a percent. I want you to think about your own insurance program that you're on, okay? So we, we can control that really well, and if you look at other benefits programs in other school districts, Granite has the most advantageous benefits plan. So while we don't always get to pay as much as we would like to attract and retain high-quality educators, you can't beat our benefits plan. And it's that size of our school district and the economies of those scales that gives us that resource and ability to do that. So that's our plan moving forward.
That's great. Can I just add this? Because some of the opposition, of course, they went UEA and is retaliatory, we know that, because they want, because they filed a lawsuit to take them out. But this is one thing I hear people say...
And on vouchers.
On vouchers. Is that UEA controls the curriculum and so on. UEA is the umbrella organization, they have to do collective bargaining with Granite Education Association, which I joined when I was 23, it was the association that has nothing to do, collective bargaining has nothing to do with how teachers teach or what they teach. And that's what I hate seeing out there in social media. They, they collectively bargain for salaries, for insurance, for retirement, for health, vacation, all those kinds of things that are important. They kind of make up for a lower salary, so I just wanted to make that known. So I've been really happy with the collective bargaining in these districts.
Very good. I see a hand over here, we'll come here and then we'll kind of move back around, so...
Yes, I'm sorry, I want to leave my plane, but...
I'm Ben, it's very nice to meet you.
I'm Noel Lannister.
Thanks for coming.
Yes. Can you please, maybe you've discussed this, I don't know, vouchers and charter schools?
Uh-huh.
Has this been discussed?
It has not. Besides what she just kind of pitched right there, what is your question?
Could you please give us your position on charter schools?
So charter schools are independent from Granite School District. You usually get a group of parents or some other organization that, a nonprofit that will create a school, get it approved by the charter school board at the state, and then create an open facility. And then that usually draws in students from their neighborhood schools. Would you see a larger amount, the higher your socioeconomics, the more inclined you are to special permit or open enroll to another school within Granite School District or to a charter school or a private school, right? So charter schools are in fact public schools. A lot of times, people feel like they're private schools, sometimes they have uniforms, they do something, there's some regulations that don't apply to them, but by and whole, in 1998, when charter schools were organized under the law, the idea is that they could do it better than a traditional public school, and they could do it for cheaper. And they have continually lobbied successfully since that time to gain access to the same amount of funding that our traditional neighborhood schools have. So that pot of money continues to get separated. Just this last budget cycle, I had, there was a bill, one of the main budget bills, actually took away funding that helped us pay higher-level professionals or teachers who had been, had higher advanced degrees or had been in service longer, we call it pro-staff money, because they're professional staff. They've been in, they've gotten a master's degree or a doctorate, or they've been teaching for an extended period of time. It took that funding away to the tune of 2.5 million, and dumped it into a larger fund called a flexible allocation, that charter schools would then have access to. So we continually see, the legislature loves charter schools, right? But even...
That's what concerns me.
Yeah. Senator Howard Stevenson, who was a retired legislator, now lives in St. George, he's been on the Hill lately, and just, his last legislative session four years ago, he said charter schools have not lived up to the promise that they were supposed to be, because the reality is, 95% of them do not outperform their neighborhood counterparts. You have this 5% of them that are stellar, they're outperforming, probably because they're drawing in a lot of high-quality students, right? Parents who are engaged, right? But the rest of them are not. Skyline High School, the former principals right here, is the highest traditional public school in the state of Utah. And it's beating out a number of charter schools. There's only one other charter school in the whole state that outperforms Skyline High School. And Olympus was, I think, number nine? So it's right up there too. I would put any of our schools up against a charter school. If you go onto the state data gateway, you can do a compare schools analysis, and what that does is actually take an apples-to-apples comparison of a school population based on their socioeconomic, free and reduced lunch numbers, and then compares their proficiency rate. And you will see that by and large, 85-plus percent of our schools are outperforming their counterparts, based on those socioeconomic apples-to-apples comparisons. Now, here's the deal, I have five children, my kids are all unique in their own circumstances. They're, sometimes charter schools are a good option for our families. And I want to make sure that Granite School District is offering as many choices and offerings as possible to attract and retain our students in their neighborhood public schools, so I don't have to close them, for one, because that's a really hard thing to do, right? But at the same time, I know... But at the same time, I know we can give those kids what they need just as well as any charter school, if not better. That being said, there are some charter schools that are performing quite well. With respect to vouchers, vouchers were passed in the twenty-twenty-three legislative session, it was HB two fifteen, um, they've increased that amount of funding, uh, by twenty-five percent, so now it's a hundred million dollars. And, uh-
No accountability.
Yes. There's zero accountability on that, and I think that's the challenge here. I want to respect people's right to choose where they put their kids and educate them, but at the same time, I also want to compete on a level playing field, okay? It's not fair for me, with a hundred new regulations from the state of Utah in the last two years, for traditional public ed to have to compete with an environment that just got an eight-thousand-dollar voucher with no regulation. How do I compete with that? I have all these hump, uh, hills and hoops to jump through, um, I have reports to complete, and you know what you have to complete in order to get that voucher funding? An end-of-your-progress report. What do we call it, a?
Portfolio.
I can't remember what they call it.
A portfolio.
A port folio. You have to turn in a portfolio, say, this is what my kid learned. That's it. We're subjected to end-of-your-testing, high-stakes testing-
Federal requirements.
Federal requirements, um, and here's eight thousand dollars over here.
How, and may I differ to you?
Sure.
How is this not so out of hand in the legislature? What's going on?
How much time do you have?
But the short answer, if I can say, the short answer is a national agenda, I posted on the chief baseball, there's a lot of teachers, there's a lot of education, there's a lot of school choice. It's really still about, we have school choice, you can choose a charter school, you can choose open enrollment, but it is a national trend in certain government, there's a push that, you know, say, parents have, the parents of the best ones decide their kids, you know, what kind of setting. But I predicted it'd be ripe for fraud in two years, and they only took one year, because the parents were using to buy ski passes, tram fees, pay for private pizziclesses, Nike go on, all the things that we all sacrificed to have our kids do on their own, selflessly. My view is objection to it is, well, now they believe it unconstitutional or-
There's a lawsuit.
But, but is the lack of accountability, without accountability, from the time I've been in the legislature, all I hear about is you must be accountable with taxpayers' money. That's why we have audits, right, Todd? That's why we have to review programs-
Our district has, is required by law to have an independent auditor of the reports directly to the board, continually auditing how we spend money.
So this has no oversight, and that's, it's run amok.
Uh, by the same token, though, what could we do to change that? Who, you mentioned a state agency that's overseeing the charter schools.
There's a state charter school board, but that is, uh, with respect to changing charter school law and vouchers, that is only on the legislature.
Is that appointed?
Uh, the legislature?
Yes.
No, those are your every-two-year house member, she's your house rep here in this area. I promise she didn't vote for vouchers, though.
They elected by the house.
You elected them.
Ben, the charter school.
Oh, the charter school board is not elected, they're appointed.
Yes, charter schools.
Yeah.
That's what I'm-
They're, they, they are the ones who approve new charter schools. So they're not over vouchers. That, that program and how charter schools get authorized is all done through legislative-
And charter schools are private schools, like Catholic schools or private-
Homeschool.
And I mean, understandably, a lot of parents, a lot of people think charter schools are part of this, but they're not. There are a few private charter schools, but most charter schools are public schools, as he said. They get, and they have, you know, they have requirements and testing and assessments. This is different, this is private schools, and it's always permeated problematic, but I mean, I, we have some of the Catholic schools, there's one in our district, but the biggest thing is-
Don't say the name, I don't want to-
They don't have to take every child, and our Utah constitution says every child is entitled to a free public education. They can be blind, deaf, have cerebral palsy, have all kinds of learning, public school, and it costs an enormous amount of money to have those interpreters or to have special programs. But a private school can say, sorry, or your kid's a behavior problem, so he's gone or she, you see what I mean? There's such a disparity between the two. For them to get taxpayer money is just fundamentally wrong and a misuse of public-
I want to make sure we have opportunity to hear lots of questions, and we really could talk about this for hours, so let's keep coming around the room and we'll just make our way.
Is there any assurance that we can have with declining enrollment as someone be downsizing teaching positions, but in the best case scenario, we have fewer students per class to smaller classroom sizes, or is there any excuse to ask teaching positions?
Correct. So his question, in case you couldn't hear it, is the, with declining enrollment, does that somehow justify larger class sizes or downsizing teachers altogether? In the schools that we've closed, we've closed ten schools already across Granite School District. We've never lost a teaching position, because what's happening is those teachers then follow the kids, not necessarily literally, I'm your teacher, now I'm going to go to your new school, but now that new school is taking those kids in and they need more teachers, right? So that class size ratio remains the same. In our proposed budget, we're actually trying to reduce class size to the extent that we can, but we're struggling because of that figure right there.
Is there a figure for what that ratio is typical for that ratio?
It's twenty-seven point two-five for elementary and it's twenty-eight point two-five for secondary. So we, we take our budget, you take a school, it's got six hundred kids in it, you divide it by twenty-seven point two-five, that's how many teachers we give you. So I just used Oak Ridge as an example for their fall projection next year, they were only allocated eight and a half teachers. It's a really small school, right? I think they got two hundred and thirty kids or something like that, and so that means more split classes. Now, could I come and provide them more teachers? Yeah. I don't have the resources to be able to do that, and that wouldn't really be fair or equitable to other schools that do have larger populations, right? Even within this area, Cresview's a little bit larger, it's got four hundred and fifty, I want to say. Um, is it fair that a, a smaller school gets smaller class sizes because there's less kids in that neighborhood? You see what I'm saying? So it's a balancing of that, that equity issue, and one of our board members has a thought.
I just wanted to say that while, while we haven't, like, fired any teachers because of that, your instinct is right, that as we lose students, we have less teachers that we can hire, right? So we haven't had to fire any because we've had teachers retire and just haven't hired as many. But you're right, it's still, we get one teacher for every twenty-seven point two-five students, so as our student population declines, that doesn't mean that our class size declines, it means we will get given less teachers, that that's-
To that end, we're expecting to lose another twelve hundred students, again, birth rates, that's what the projection is for next year, and we will take care of that through regular attrition. That's another benefit of, uh, that economies of scale of our size, is that we have a lot of teaching positions. We have thirty-five hundred teachers district-wide, and chances are, there's a bunch of those that want to retire on any given year, or quit, get pregnant, need to take leave, and there are positions to, to fill with those spots.
With those equitable ratios.
Yep, yep. So let's come here, and then we'll, I'm sorry, you go next, because you were next.
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, two questions, one from my wife, from my wife, one from me. Um, first off, in terms of prioritizing, um, teaching positions, um, when they're posted online, I know for one-year, teachers have been on one-year contracts, they've been put down to the very bottom, and for those with one-year contracts as well, do they have priority of somebody that may not even have a degree that's in the system? So if they went to like a, a Title One, Title One school and won the contract to help out, all of a sudden they drop out to the very, to the very bottom in terms of, you know, being able to fund the job?
Right. So we did close a couple of schools this last cycle over along thirty-one hundred South Corridor, right? So we had, uh, and we actually regenerate, kind of turned over one of our schools altogether, which is reconstituted the whole staff. And so we put a bunch of teachers in the surplus situation, is what that's called. That doesn't sound very good, and it doesn't sound like we value our teachers, right? But what it essentially means is we have, we have all these teachers that we need to find a position for, now that those students are going to different locations, right? For this process that we've just talked about. And so I really would like to come up with a better name. Uh, soon to have a home, but don't have one yet is a little bit too long, but I don't love surplus, right? It doesn't sound very warm and caring to our teachers who are doing a great job for us, and we're going to get you into a spot, we just don't have one for you right now. We go through that process first per the negotiated agreement. So, um, when we talked about collective bargaining earlier, we have an agreement with our teachers' association, how we go through that process to place those teachers, and in what order we do that in. So we absolutely have to get through that surplus list first, I'm sorry, the teachers that don't right have a position quite yet, but will have one soon, um, we have to get through that list first, and then we will look at those one-year positions. I feel very confident, um, looking at our, I, I, looking at all the numbers, right? From my thirty thousand foot, I can't guarantee it, but I feel very confident. We've been in this situation before with the amount of surplus and one-year teachers that we've had before, and we've been able to place every single one.
So would somebody without their teaching certificates to help, or are you-
No, if you're, at that point in time, if you've already been an employee of the district, you get prioritized on the interview, is my understanding.
Okay. And then the follow, a different question for, have they considered, like, if they self-funded for insurance, have they considered doing an HSA, because it seemed like that could be a, a way to save money and also give a lot of-
So we do provide our employees access to, um, what's it called?
FSA.
Thank you.
Then HSA is completely different.
Yeah, it is totally different. Um, you want to speak to that?
So that comes down to the employees and their desire to get into a high deductible plan. When HSA has to be tied to a high deductible health plan, and at this time, as we've had our committees working with the associations talking about options for health insurance, they've not been real interested in looking into an HSA because of that high deductible plan that's tied to it.
It can save so much money.
And, and that, maybe that, we do have a, a benefits committee that helps us guide and, and work through some of those decision-making, so our employees do have a lot of options to be able to, to indicate that direction. Um, that being said, savings on, we're getting the bulk of our cost savings through running our own health clinics, uh, by providing cheaper prescription costs through that clinic. There's a number of other ways that we're able to save our employees money, again, because of the economies of scale and our size. You look at any other smaller school district in the state, and they're paying two or three times, our employees are paying two or three times, and the districts themselves are paying two or three times to a private company to provide those health benefits, and we don't have to worry about that in Granite School District.
Even the larger districts.
Yeah, it might be worth mentioning that when, when one of our employees visits our own health clinic, there is no out-of-pocket cost at all, and there's no copay, it is one hundred percent covered.
And for ninety percent of prescriptions are available there too, at no cost.
As a dispensary, so that's, that's part of what's driving the reluctance to, to gravitate to an HSA, is that when they visit the, the, our own health clinic, a hundred percent of their services are covered.
Which is similar to, I mean, you could do that in an HSA, but reduce the premiums to almost nothing.
Yeah. I mean, there's pros and cons, right? So we're going to listen to our employees and, and kind of figure out the best way forward in terms of that.
Thank you.
I, I will say this, our, our health plan is, is designed for, you can tell our employees have a lot of say in it, okay? Because I have too many kids under our health plan, right? It's not, it, if I get cancer, our health plan is amazing, right? But, uh, there've been other health plans that are a little bit better for different types of family circumstances, right? And so we continue to model that and evolve that based on our employee input and need, primarily through that, uh, that benefits committee. So, good question. Yes, sir.
Can we talk about taxes? That's the reason why you can't talk about the old taxes, you can't talk about these things.
Right. Yeah. Taxes are awful, right? So, uh, we have a legislature, I'm going to exclude present company, um, where the majority feels like, um, we should be reducing income taxes or potentially eliminating them altogether.
Yes.
Okay? So, income tax revenue is the primary source by which public education is funded, uh, per the state constitution.
Income tax, property tax.
Income tax.
We still get, I'll get to property tax in a second. Uh, so income tax is our primary source for our maintenance and operations budget, so that ninety percent of that fund, the revenue we receive from the state, uh, comes in the form of a weighted pupil unit, or we get this much money per kid, right? So again, we can use economies of scale, using those resources to provide a number of programs, special education resources, do a number of things with that. But the problem is they keep reducing income tax revenue and funding things like vouchers to the tune of a hundred million dollars, and putting funds that should probably or have traditionally gone to, I'm, I'm sharing a little bit of my opinion here, and I apologize for, for giving my bias. Um, money, money that should go to public education and help reduce class sizes and, and take care of some of these other things. So this last year, the WPU received at the top, that green figure up there, an increase of four percent. That sounds really good, doesn't it? Well, that four percent equates to roughly thirteen and a half million dollars, okay? That, out of an eight-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar budget, it's not a ton of money, right? But it's going to help us, our employees sometimes look at that four percent and say, I'm going to get a four percent raise, right? But that's, that number does not translate evenly. And where is inflation at right now?
Two points something.
Okay, it's, it's dropped, right? But tru-, in, over the last year, it's been as high as six and eight percent the last few years, right? So four percent is intended to cover from the state, um, increases in inflation, there's, uh, under state law, HB two thirty-seven or something like that?
Five thirty.
We'll throw out numbers here, uh, we promise we're not making them up. Uh, we can find the bill for you. They're required to fund us at a certain amount or above, all right? This last year, they gave us a four percent, this last legislative session, that ended in early March, right? A four percent WPU increase. There are three bills up there, HB two, HB three, and SB two, that defunded other programs in Granite School District to the tune of point four-one percent, lost revenue. They cut another program altogether, um, HB two, uh, in that, that's the primary funding bill for the year, the big education budget bill, HB two was, another point four-one percent. They mandated that we had to get rid of school fees, but they only gave us one-time money to be able to do it. So we have to build that into our budget over time, so that's another reduction in revenue of another half a percent. That pro staff change I already told you about, it's point seven-four percent. Changes to how we levy taxes is going to cost us a lot more money down the road, but four point two-one percent. And there's a school safety bill that requires us to have armed security in every school through Granite School District without any funding to go with that. So that four percent is now negative, oh crap, late power, it's late power.
So, can you tell me, what, what were the defunded programs and what was cut programs?
You want to rattle through those?
Yep. So the defunded programs were game prevention program, stipends for highly impacted, uh, student, uh, scholarships.
Yes.
Uh, we, uh, also lost money for libraries, for matching funds for nurses, a lot of the primary defunding services.
Okay. Pro staff money goes to steps and lanes primarily, that's the two and a half million dollars. There's a property tax revenue down here as well that will have an impact. There's a portion of, uh, HB two, was it, that it's going to cost us fifteen million over the next three years?
So that's the voted and board.
Okay, that's the voted and board leeway change.
Can you explain more detail about voted and board change, because I don't understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. And we will actually have, uh, a budget hearing in June, and you, we will have, we will send you more details. You can look at it on our homepage, line by line, um, these budget numbers. We're having a budget luncheon with our legislators and other elected officials to go through these details, uh, in two weeks, I want to say. Uh, hopefully we'll have our budget kind of put together by then. We're still putting these numbers together. Now, this is just the WPU and the income tax revenue that comes to the school district. There's a whole property tax piece, that's the other funding source. The, the bulk of that funding is actually, goes towards, uh, capital facilities under state law. So there is a portion of that, uh, that levy that does come into our general maintenance and operations fund, but the bulk of your property tax revenue, I'm looking at my finance guy to make sure I don't say anything wrong, is going towards our facilities. And so we have had a pay-as-you-go plan for a long time, we passed upon in two thousand nine, and we passed another one in twenty seventeen. When we went out and sold that bond in twenty sixteen, before we actually went out to the voters and had them vote on it in twenty seventeen, we held a bunch of meetings and we gave people a bunch of options on, how do you want to go about rebuilding schools, right? Um, because the money that we have is insufficient, it was a billion-dollar problem at that point in time, we had the oldest schools in the state on average, and we had a capital deficit problem and twenty million dollars to repair those buildings on an annual basis. Well, at that point in time, and- Well, at that point in time, an elementary school costs about that much to rebuild. And we have 60 of them at that point in time, right? So clearly, the funding that we were receiving through property tax was going to be insufficient. So we put a 40-year strategic plan together to rebuild all or renovate all of our buildings and be able to retain revenue. What that included was a one-time bond that replaced Skyline and Cypress. Those projects are wrapping up here soon, a couple of other smaller projects. And then kick-started the pay-as-you-go plan. So we raised taxes over here, and then as we paid those bonds down over the last eight years, we have been shifting the revenue. So we have to take it out of this pocket, that additional revenue that's no longer going to pay towards the bond, and put it in that capital maintenance pay-as-you-go plan pocket. And that looks like a tax increase, but the idea is to keep and maintain the rate and not increase taxes long-term. The problem is, when the rate does get held and your value of your home goes up, what happens? Your property taxes go up, right?
Oh, you can adjust the rate.
Say that again?
You can adjust the rate.
Perhaps, right? So the goal has been to try to maintain that revenue so that we can actually speed up the process of, I mean, I've got, we've done a bunch of security things on our schools per state law and some other factors, but we need to rebuild a number of schools, not just in this area, but throughout Granite School District. Most of their are elementaries. Most of our high schools are in a good place, but Everett Springs do to be rebuilt in a few years on that 40-year plan. Oak Ridge and Eastwood are on that plan. I will tell you, as part of the budget conversations at that time, when we were holding these kind of community meetings to talk about the bond, we had a number of people saying, "Are you gonna rebuild schools you don't need?" And so when people talked to us about school closures, we'd gone through that bond process before we actually started looking at school closures. Because if you look at our calendar there, that bond was passed in 2017. Where did we see the vast majority of our declines? It's really been since 2019, right? When interest rates got really low and people started buying larger homes in other places, right? And then housing prices started doing, if you look at our decline, you can see conversely, housing prices are going up at the same time, which is a double whammy for a district like ours with mature neighborhoods. So with respect to that, you've got a situation where we continue, our biggest cost savings, there's not a huge cost savings in school closures because we still need the teachers, right? We're still paying for the teachers. We might not need as many principals or front desk secretaries or janitors to maintain the buildings. The cost for utilities are roughly a half a million to $600,000 a year. A larger building might be more like $800,000 a year. So the big cost savings in a school closure is frankly the need to not have to rebuild that building long-term. And so as we close 10 schools west of us here in Granite School District, a lot of those are projects that can come off that 40-year strategic plan. It's $35 million I'm not gonna have to spend to rebuild Orchard Elementary, which was closed this last cycle, right? And so there's a benefit to the tax barriers, and that means those other projects that do need to be taken care of can be moved up on that list as well. Did that answer your question on taxation?
Look, I wanna go back to the school safety enhancement issue. I talked to a board member before I came to the meeting, and they're telling me that it's gonna be relatively costly to do everything state legislature wants you to do. And some of the things that are being asked by the state legislature people are coming a little bit too far, with regards to windows, with bulletproof windows. I mean, I've never, you know, I've never once heard of a school shooting, where they are shooting from exterior, you know, exterior windows inside. They're always inside the school, or they're coming in from outside. And so why spend money, you know, they're also telling me that so many schools have such old windows, they have to replace the windows and then.
And then with the film on them.
So, so what I told him is, when like, some people decide on vouchers, why don't you sue the state legislature over this bill, rather than just say, "We're gonna do it"?
So you're talking about a legal question of whether we have standing to sue the state for lack of funding for the mandates that they're, so we have two, but we have actually three unfunded mandates this last legislative cycle. School fees is one of them, right? And I think we'd all, I think we all agree that it would be great to get rid of curricular fees, right? We're not talking about football or things, we're talking about art supplies or things of that nature, right? I think we all agree that's a good thing to do, but we need that money to be put into the WPU because now it's going to force us, we have legislators telling us, "Well, we're cutting income taxes, you need to go find the money yourself." What does that mean? I only have one funding source, and it's my property tax revenue, right? So in addition to that, you talked about the school safety bill. HB 40 was the updated version of that. There's one other bill that inadvertently punishes a district like Granite more than a district like Davis. Because we have a higher amount of free and reduced lunch, they've gotten rid of reduced lunch, and we're now required to fund those kids at the full free amount, right? And so they've given us again, one-time funding to be able to pay for that right out of the gate. And then we're going out to find that WPU in that increased revenue that they do give us, find a way to fund that long-term. So you're right, they gave us $800 million in HB 84, but that's statewide. Granite usually gets about 10% of those kind of funding, but it's all in one-time grants, and they're telling us how and what we can spend it on. Right now, they're telling us they're going to identify the panic button vendor, and we have to then use that panic button vendor, right? So the vendors are having a field day. I get probably 20 emails a day from panic vendor buttons, people who make ballistics film for windows, people who want me to purchase more cameras and other security software. And the biggest funding piece on this, again, that's one-time money, and it's estimated to be over $1 billion to implement all this statewide, right? We have looked at the legislature, after HB 84 was passed, I went on the news and said, "These are all, we appreciate the legislature taking school security seriously, but we don't know how we're gonna fund this," right? And the sponsor of the bill, his name's Ryan Wilcox, he's a nice guy, he's from Lieber County. He called me that night and chewed me out, says, "What are you talking about? We gave you 18% more money, this is a year where WP was 4%." So in our legislators' minds, there's a disconnect on how much money they're giving us and telling us how we can spend it in unrestricted funds that we really don't have access to. So there is a huge disconnect there, and the biggest thing we can do is talk to our legislators about that. But I gotta tell you, this isn't a Granite School District problem. By and large, our representatives are very supportive of us and are very supportive of helping us fund these things.
Okay, so why don't you talk to other school districts throughout the state and say, "Let's band together and sue the state legislature over this"?
I, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I play one on TV, but that was a joke, sorry. I know it's after 7:00, we can't laugh anymore, but. The reality is, is I don't know if we really actually have legal standing to do that. And I will tell you that the UEA is feeling the wrath of the legislature right now by challenging their legislation. And it's really hard for me to look at our Board of Education with the meager handout that we just got on the 4% with this other punishment and say, "Let's go bite the hand that feeds us." You see what I'm saying? So it's a little bit of a dilemma, that do we use precious resources that we don't really have to then instigate litigation, which I don't know if we even have legal standing to do so. We have a school board member who wants to chime in on that.
I'm of the opinion that it's not the school districts. They are in the job of educating kids, we are a government entity, we're funded by the government. If somebody were to sue, it should be an outside entity, an education association of some sort, a nonprofit that is separated from the government. It's not, that doesn't receive their revenue from the government, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
So if you wanted to help do something like that, get involved in one of these people, like Education First, or like some of these, there are other entities who would be better positioned to do that, does that make sense? But I love your idea, yeah, like see the pride of these people.
I'm all for it, I'm frankly sick and tired of the Republican majority, and I'm a Republican. I'm sick and tired of them.
I just wanna point out this school safety thing, because I've had a big issue with the kind of money that you're putting into it and telling schools what we should do. That commission doesn't have one teacher on it, no school employees. They're all legislators or other people. Now, if you were in a school, for example, and they start talking about single entry, how many entries are in this high school?
Yeah.
You can't, kids come and go all the time, you cannot have that kind of situation. And what kind of person, I mean, I speak to a lot of school classes, I've even asked junior high, what would make you feel safest? Because to get into Bonneville Junior High now, in most schools, you have to push a button.
You gotta ring a doorbell.
You have to ring the doorbell at elementary schools. But the kids say, "Well, the school cop in uniform with a gun." But some random person that you hire, independent, to come in and walk around with a gun all day, does that make kids feel safer? No. Does it make parents feel safer? No. It takes some kind of class. I mean, I just think they're going in the wrong direction. Talk about vendors, that's too propitious.
There are not enough police officers in the state to put them in.
Well, no, I get it, because pretty much all municipalities can't even hire enough to do the regular.
Right now, yeah. So we're looking at a negative 2%.
Good boy.
School safety is actually what, another percent? It's probably, I wanna say about 2% what we estimate it will take to comply with the ongoing portion of that. So we're probably at negative 4% or 5% on our budget this year, after getting a 4% increase in the WPU. So did our legislators here vote for that? Well, one or two of them did, but most of them were very supportive of Granite School District. And believe you me, I've stood up in some of these meetings with superintendents and said, "Get on the phone with your legislator right now, they just passed SB 37, which barely got vetoed by the governor, now they're looking at it override." In that meeting, when it was passed, we were all meeting together, and I got up in that meeting and said, "Call your senator right now and recall that bill. That's bad legislation, it's gonna harm public schools." We are having those conversations with our other counterparts. But at the same time, we have great relationships with our legislators.
And you answer my taxes, 10 bucks.
I would, wow.
But if I may say.
Again, I can't bite the hand that feeds me over here.
As the person who probably represents most of the people in this room about property taxes and the rate, so now I look at this and I say, "Okay, Ben, Todd, go back and cut again as much as you think you can without destroying the education of our children." And now how much is left, because that's how much, the only place for me to get that money is property tax increase, right? So then we're put in that hard position. And we have a legislature right now who is saying to me, "Yeah, you should be raising property taxes, you're not raising them enough. So we're going to decrease the income tax to force you to raise the property tax." So you see how we're in this position, because that's kind of the power struggle that's happening with legislators and school boards right now.
And put it on top of that, there was a bill this last legislative session that if we proposed a tax increase, it would be referendable. Meaning that if community members didn't like that we proposed a tax increase, they could gather signatures and put it on the ballot. So now we would be forced to go to voters for every single tax increase. We don't have this idea of a republic anymore, where we elect a school board to represent us. They're making it, on top of that, they're telling our school board members, "You do the hard work of raising taxes, we're also gonna put one hand behind your back when you seek to do so." So it's not a great situation. Let's come here and then.
The diversity of probably school closures, so kids who are out of district, what happens to them? Do they travel, do they move with the kids to that school?
If their parents choose to do so. So when you're coming from out of district, you're actually filing a permit with the school. It's an open enrollment permit, and you're supposed to fill that out every year. Most schools will just retain the one that you've had, right? So there's a thousand kids, like I said, at Skyline, who come from out of boundary or out of district altogether. So we're stealing kids from, despite our declining enrollment here, we're actually doing a lot better than we would be if we weren't stealing a bunch of kids from Canyon and Salt Lake District, because we're amazing over here, right? We got Lipus, we got Skyline, we got Cottonwood, we've got some amazing schools here. These are some of the highest-performing schools literally in the state. So when people talk to me about like splitting the district, I'm like, "We're giving you the best educational opportunities right now. Why would we increase taxes to enhance what services? We're giving you the best we can right now, given the circumstances." So yes, they would have to come back and reapply for enrollment in the school of their choice.
Okay, so my child would have Rosegrass, she would automatically go with the rest of those schools?
Correct, you would get to choose. And frankly, we do see that, when we've seen school closures, we will see families kinda make a decision, "Do I wanna follow to my new boundary school? Or do I wanna look at other opportunities?" And we always wanna make sure they feel very welcome. In fact, tonight, a couple of our board members are at Copper Hills Elementary, which is in West Valley Boundary in Magna. They're taking on some kids, they're having an open house for families who, school was closed last year, this last cycle, that will end this year, right? To welcome to their new school next year, right? So we do a bunch of events to help our kids feel welcome and work through that transition process, because closing a school's hard, right? We want those families to be able to go and feel welcome in their neighborhood public school to the highest degree possible.
Would that child have a priority to go with the kids to that other school?
By and large, most kids are following their boundary path. Is that?
It's an open enrollment question.
Oh, yeah.
So if Rosegrass, for instance, closed, and all those kids went to another school, would my child have a priority in that?
When we start to narrow the scope of the study, we'll start to answer some of those questions a little bit better. So for instance, when Mill Creek Elementary was proposed for closure, and we were looking to move their DLI, their language program, over to William Penn Elementary, we created a new prioritization that families that were currently in that program would have priority status. You have neighborhood families, right? They would get first pick. And then anybody within the new boundary would get second, and then those who were currently part of that program would get, and we got everybody in. And to be honest, our population's declined so much in these areas, we actually have a tremendous amount of capacity in these schools. Some of these schools are holding 230 kids, and they were meant to hold 600 kids, right? So even with two school closures, three school closures, whatever the recommendation is, we will have a lot of capacity in these schools. And families who want a special permit to whatever school they want will likely have that option still available. And frankly, that's our intent too. We're here to make sure we're providing quality educational opportunities to you as a family, right? So it would be remiss to make a school so big, we can't fit open enrollment permits into it. Does that make sense? We're gonna leave a little bit of a gap there to make sure that we can continue to draw and support that school that way.
Under current momentum, the Federal Department of Education will dissolve. If that occurs, how would it affect you?
Eight percent of our budget currently federal funding. Majority of that's special education and Title I, which is at-risk funding for impoverished kids. There's some Title VIs and some other monies for smaller populations as well. The reality is that those funding mechanisms are not tied to the department themselves, itself. They're over here in legislation itself. So through IDEA or the Educational, Elementary Secondary Education Act, ESEA, that's how those things are funded. So even with the elimination of the department, those funding streams are still there. So really, it's about how well Congress is going to fund those. And frankly, we've seen a decline in Title I funding and special education funding the last decade or so. And so even with the Department of Education, we've still seen a decrease in funding on that front. We've had people come to our budget hearing last year that said, "You guys need to get off federal funding altogether." And man, we wouldn't have to follow a bunch of federal regulations if we weren't receiving federal funds, right? That's the whole notion of the elimination of the Department of Education, is making it a local issue, right? But at the same time, how do I replace 8% of our budget without cutting off a bunch of teachers? Because 90% of our maintenance and operation budget is people, it's teachers, right? It's staff. So I don't know how I would replace that funding without a significant tax increase or additional funding from state.
The current condition is better with the Federal Department of Education?
Well, at least, but if I had my brothers, I would say, "Lock grant the money to the states and let us decide how to spend it." Because right now, it's coming to us in a restricted status, meaning we have to spend it this way. Just like our school safety money has to be spent.
Yeah, whether it's earmarked.
Yeah, is earmarked or restricted, is, yeah, is, what are accounts?
Especially if they get their funding, because what I know about the Department of Education is they also have a civil rights legal staff to make sure that kids by law, no matter what their disability is, that they get funded. Would you be able to monitor that? See, that's one of the areas.
Yeah, that is actually the primary function of the Federal Department of Education, is the Office of Civil Rights, which monitors compliance with things like privacy laws, special education resources. When a parent doesn't feel like we're doing a good job educating their special education child, they can go to the state, but then their next step is to go to the federal government. And then if they found a cause or a findings, they would then, uh, enter into an agreement with us. Remember that bullying case out of Davis? They entered into a civil rights, um, agreement with the Department of Justice and they monitored them, some Davis School District, to make sure there was no more racism, right? And of course, if you implement an agreement like that, all the kids know that they can't be racist anymore, right? That's how that works, right? So, uh, sorry, I'm being a little flippant. Um, rarely does the federal government actually have, I mean, the intent is good, don't get me wrong. Of course, we don't want racism in our schools. We don't want kids teasing kids or bullying kids. But did that agreement really do anything except put more stringent requirements on Davis School District at that time? That remains to be seen.
I have a coffee guard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This lady puts her pipe on the line. Are you coming to our board meeting? We're going to thank you. You're going to get an invitation here.
You'll know more in June about the total calling. Are there more on the west side or are there some in the east side?
So we have been studying different areas. Um, and we have kind of moved all over the district. So right now the study area, it's a year-long process, February to, to end of December. Okay, so we start the process in February. We kind of say, all options are on the table. Tell us what's going on in your communities. We try to gather a lot of public feedback, see how, uh, what our challenges are with our facility. Do, go through that process. Now we're in the part where we engage parents, create that parent committee that then can make recommendations. The next step is to take schools off the plate for closure, right? So narrow the scope of the study with the help of our parents in those communities, right? So that, the June-July timeframe will just narrow the scope of the study. It'll say, we're not going to consider this school for closure. It still might have a boundary adjustment, but we're really looking at this area now, right? And that's based on all the four hundred comments we've received thus far and any more comments that we get and any additional meetings that we hold. Then we'll wait through the summer because it's not a great time to engage the public during the summer. You're all on vacation or on the lake, right? I have my picture of Lake Potter, right? So, uh, we'll bring you back in the fall with some actual proposals. And then it'll be like, do this over here or this option over here. And we'll let the community kind of fester and give us more feedback on those options. So this really is a community-driven process. There's a lot of feedback given to our board members. And then they will make a decision in November or December. Either narrow the scope even further to one particular closure option or keep a couple of options open all the way through until November. But in June, we'll have a pretty good idea of where that looks like.
The twenty-five, twenty-six year.
Yeah, and then the, then the closure would occur the following year, correct. So we closed three schools in the west side along that thirty-one hundred corridor. We reopened one as a magnet, but all that's actually, we're going through this transition process now. We did that, made, the board made that decision in November, December. Now we're going through the transition process. Like tonight, Copper Hills is hosting that welcoming party for Orchard Elementary families, right? So they're going to finish their school year. And then we'll have some special ceremonies, uh, open houses for the community, um, do some nice things to send those kids off on the right, on the right way and get them settled in their new schools. And those schools will close at the end of this current school year. And so comparably, whatever happens on this study, if and when there's a closure, that decision would be made in November, December. We'd kind of do the same thing, transition through the year. And that decision would not be implemented until the fall of twenty twenty-six. And hopefully you're still crossing dark for us, right?
I'm still alive.
Because a car didn't hit you. Hey, I'm going to answer one or two more questions and we'll kind of close the meeting at seven thirty formally. But I will hang out as long as you would like to talk. I'm going to get my email address and write it on the board here for you. And if you want to call me or come and visit with me, you are welcome to do so. Um, I can't promise that I will respond. I've got about three hundred emails in my inbox right now. I can promise you I will respond to your email, but, uh, in a timely fashion, it might be a few days. So with that, we'll come right back here.
Thank you first of all for getting your questions.
Hey, that's, that's core board, that's core board. That's, that was a tough decision, right? And, uh, very important.
Yes, and I've sat through three days, pretty full of times at high schools. Uh, and the kids are not paying attention. They don't play with the phone. It's, and why did it take so long?
Well, I got to tell you, there are some parents who are still pushing back and saying, I want to be able to call. So I teach a class. I teach a core government class out of one of our high schools. I was at Skyline last semester. And when I was teaching my class, in the middle of my lecture, I had a kid who wasn't supposed to have their phone on him because they were supposed to be in these lockers over here. And they left their ringer on, right? And so he pulls out his phone, he's like, it's my mom. I'm like, why is your mom calling you at eight thirty in the morning? Doesn't she know you're at school? He's like, yeah, but I got to answer. And I'm like, no, you don't got to answer. I'm like, are you okay right now? Are you, you in danger in any way, shape, or form? And so.
Sloppy parent.
Yeah, we, I have, I have another parent. And we've tried to make accommodations as appropriate for kids who have health or other circumstances that necessitate having access to that device. But frankly, the research is very clear. It's indicating that we're just creating an anxious generation, uh, and kids who are anxiety ridden and, uh, creating, uh, and promulgating mental health challenges with kids by giving them access to so much screen time. And in fact, our board's actually even discussing, how do we make sure that we're limiting Chromebook use, right? That it's only being used for legitimate instructional purposes and that kids aren't stuck glued to a screen all day.
I just want to further that. Where did you get the most support of legislature? Who was for, who was against?
Um, it was kind of a mixed bag.
Well, I think the legislature was the one who paid a lot of their.
Yes, they were.
Legislators, she said, I have five kids. I'm in charge of their phones, not the government, you know, there's some of that. But anybody who's been in schools, like you say, you know, know how disruptive it is. And teachers can tell you that. I'm more a proponent for the upper grades. Now, this is still in dispute. Is it the morning to, when they get school to the end of the day? I think that's okay for elementary schools. I like that. For high school kids who many have classes other places and both work and so on, I think it ought to be bell to bell. Because my daughter's class at Scotty, they have a little cuppy, they put it in, it's got a number. And if, let's say, an, uh, emergency happened, you know, a school shooter, da, 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 da. Well, the kids can just run over and get their phone. You know, you hear about kids calling their parents. I mean, it's not out of their reach. But I, that's how I think it is. There are still people pushing from, from.
Bell to bell, yeah. And the governor even said that. So we had looked at this in our district as a policy. And we were one of the first districts to initiate a, a school phone, a cell phone ban in our schools. But I got to tell you, a lot of that came from because there were people, our community members and some of our legislators. Um, there was Amy Winder Newton, who's a county commissioner, who's also works for the governor's office, uh, doing family work. And she was a big advocate. Um, but frankly, our board members kind of took the lead with that and said, it's time to look at this. And frankly, we had universal support from our educators by and large. And so even though we didn't have some parents, we, we felt very comfortable. We thought we were going to come back and modify that this spring because there was going to be some needed adjustments. And we're really only hearing good things by and large.
I just want to adjust that. I feel like what happened was our teachers came to the board and said, we can't take it anymore. And the board responded to teachers. That's how I perceive it. Oh, go ahead.
I think the governor said, maybe we need to have a policy. And the board said, okay, teachers, what do you want? And the teachers said, oh, please take.
Yes, the governor did come out at one point and say. You got to need to look at passing a policy. Very good.
Will that have an explanation on Chromebooks? Because when I was in the classroom, YouTube was on half of the time.
Yep. So we've restricted a number of things. Um, we cut back even more. I was with a group of parents up at Churchill, uh, a year or so ago. Um, it was, uh, I wasn't superintendent at that point. I was just doing a digital safety presentation in another role. And, uh, I, we kept, parents were like, you need to turn this off or you need to do this off. And then I have another parent who's like, turn off the wifi at your home. It's a break, right? And so you have this disparity even between parents. Parents who don't know how to manage the, the technology use, don't want to spend the time to supervise it. If you come to my house, if you want to use your computer, it's sitting here in this very public place. And they're all there, and that's the only place you can do it. And you can only do it when a parent's there. But not every parent has the ability to provide that type of supervision or understands the technology. So we actually went back and provided some additional options this last fall to parents be able to further restrict their kids' access to use to some of those types of sites. And frankly, just recently, we even further restricted access to YouTube and some other things. It's, there's kind of a funny dynamic there. Part of that was to, we can still use YouTube and post things under Canvas, but you can't go to YouTube just the site itself anymore.
But basically the extension.
Yeah, so now we're just really limiting that. There's a couple of reasons for that. We feel like it's better for the instructional purposes and the use of the Chromebook itself. And we're trying to make sure that that Chromebook is actually being used just for educational purposes in the classroom and not to, to play games or whatever. Um, but the other part of that is that, uh, Google came back, um, and, and could not provide this, the assurances that our students' data privacy would be protected. So we said, well, we can't, we can't let you have carte blanche access to, to YouTube anymore then. Because if, if Google's collecting our students' data, that's a no-no, right?
Is that showing that it's still useful to have Chromebooks to take home or have it for personal use for them?
Our principal would like to say something back here.
You know, I'll tell you, AP testing this year and ACT testing is all done digitally. And so our students all have a school-issued Chromebook for their use. And so usually there's not, our teachers have worked really hard to get away from using Chromebooks in their classroom. And so that that's not, you know, through COVID, it was like, this was a primary form of how you can teach. But they worked really hard to get away from that. And when teachers utilize Chromebooks in their classroom, when they have their kids and we require our kids to be on a school-issued Chromebook so that they can monitor what the kids are doing on land school. And so they can see, they can see every, they've got all of their students and so on, they're doing an assessment. They can make sure that the kids only doing, only on the screen that is open. And so it monitors and it keeps it confined to that specific website, which has been really helpful. And so to prepare the kids, you know, it was, it was a big transition for our school to go from the paper ACT test to the work, to the digital AP test because, well, not AP, sorry, ACT and going AP this year. It's been a big transition for us because it's not been what we've been used to. And so we're preparing the kids in a different way than what we had in the past.
I will say this, I'm in schools all the time. I probably spend half to two-thirds of my time visiting schools and classroom spaces. So I see good use of technology and I see really poor use of technology. When we're using technology, particularly in an elementary or junior high school, mostly in the high schools, I see pretty good use of technology, right? It's in the junior highs or the elementaries where I see a little bit more of it being used as, uh, an incentive, fun time and/or, um, a babysitting tool while they're providing a tier-two intervention. So I need to pull a small group of kids over to this table and work on reading with that individual group. If they're using land school, which allows them to moderate, teachers with excellent classroom management skills, those kids are using the Chromebooks, they know exactly what they're supposed to be doing. They're following through a very few deviations from that. That's what I would call good use of that technology and Chromebook use. What I would see poor is when we see that poor classroom management. And that's something we need to work on is making sure that we're providing good quality instruction to our kids and that their time and their management is, is used well. We're actually looking at a policy to, to provide that philosophical guidance, um, on how Chromebooks should be used. And frankly, if it's not being used for, um, quality and, and instructional purposes, then we don't want kids on screens.
I had students from a junior, a couple of classes visiting me during the session. And they were like, asking questions or telling me things. And you know what? In both classes, there were kids who said, we are tired of looking at screens up there. We don't have Chromebook too much.
Yep.
I think you still need interaction with teachers and people and why do you?
So in my class, I use, uh, paper notes. And they're, uh, they have to go through and fill out the different sections. And we put the Chromebooks away. But then every once in a while, I'll have them pull out and do what's called a padlet. Because some of my kids don't speak very good English, but they know, they know English, they don't speak it very well. And so they're not willing to engage me very much, like speak in class because they're, they're embarrassed that they don't speak very good English, right? So they get on this padlet and I will post a question. And right here on the screen, I can see all of their responses. And then I can say, hey, you put this answer here, tell me what you think about this. And we have some engagement. That's what I, I mean, I'm not just saying this because I did it. But I was taught, I had an instructional coach come and help me develop that strategy to be able to engage the kids using the tool as opposed to letting the tool engage the kids. Yeah, yeah. But I have been in situations where, where we do see kids, you know, right? It would be my preference, and we're working this through with the board because they are the ones who make the decision ultimately, um, that we no longer just give kids Chromebooks one-to-one. We keep them in the class, we pull them out when necessary. At the high school level, it's a little bit different, uh, because they do so much on the Chromebook itself. Uh, but at junior high, if you need, if you don't have access to that technology at home, let's check you out a Chromebook and you just take it when you go home at night, right? Um, as opposed to everybody just going one-to-one. COVID kind of took us over here to the threshold of, of one-to-one. And now we're kind of, that pendulum is swinging back a little bit.
I think too, like, uh, one of the things that's just shocking me is how fast it's all changing, right? So we're like, okay, this is our plan. This is what's best for kids. And then two years later, we're like, pull on the brakes. That was not what was best for kids. Because there's so much new. You have to guess in many ways. And so plan on it that this is going to be something that's going to evolve very quickly. In two years, it could be a completely different thing for us. And, um, so the, I, I would say the main takeaway about tech, technology at this point is that, um, it's going to be different in a month and then different in another month and different in another month.
Ben, a lot of my colleagues in elementary, um, view it as like, we need to get back to using technology as salt on food. And we need, we want to bring back the artistry in teaching.
Yeah, because it is a craft, it is an art, right? Creating quality engagement, we use tools. We don't just say, the computer doesn't do a teaching. It's a teacher who does the teaching, right? Very good. Let's take one more question and then we'll break up the meeting formally. But I'll hang out and answer any other questions one-on-one at that point in time. Does that work? Because it's seven thirty, I know some of you are clamoring for some Chick-fil-A or something, right? Maybe it's just me, okay?
I, I just have, how, how much, uh, capability do you have, uh, to create policy toward, uh, school safety? You were on that issue and it's very, it looks like it's very expensive.
Very expensive.
Um, I have been listening around, uh, the country. There's been several school districts that have adopted. And I don't know if you can't because you're tied to the state. But, uh, they're, they're more locally controlled. We're talking about, uh, North Carolina, Tennessee, Georgia, um, where they have teachers that are armed in the classroom. Not necessarily a gun, but you know, a burner gun or saber gun. And that, there has not been one school shooting in any of those schools. And they're also, uh, classified as not gun-free zones where all of the school shooters in this country have gone to gun-free zones.
Right. So this school safety bill from HB eighty-four last year and HB forty this year did stipulate some requirements. One of those is armed security in every school. Um, it does not permit teachers, teachers can already carry if they would like to, if they have a concealed carry permit. And we do have a number of employees who do carry. Now, under that concealed carry permit, if you have a concealed carry permit, that whole, uh, secrecy is lost of that concealed carry when you tell me you have a gun, right? Now I know who has a gun, right? The whole purpose and intent is lost when you advertise that you're carrying a gun. So we do have a number of teachers. I know this. Um, one of them shot a toilet in one of our schools a few years ago accidentally, okay? So we know that we do have teachers who carry guns and they are legally able to do so. There's a number of classes every year that are offered free to teachers to come. And, uh, the toilet's fine, it's okay, it lifts. And the toilet's fine, it's okay. But yes, we do have teachers who are able to carry and concealed carry. That is separate from the school safety bill. What the school safety bill does require is that we do have armed security in our schools. What that could be is a police officer, it could be a rent-a-cop, like.
But it could, could it be a teacher practicing their.
Yes and no.
Right to conceal and carry and nobody's going to walk into a school that they know.
Correct. When we, when police, when people see a police car sitting out in front of a school. Absolutely. So we have, yes, so the bottom layer of that is the Guardian program. So what that does is allow janitors and secretaries, non-teaching personnel to get a small stipend from the state, take a training course, get a mental health evaluation and be, be able to carry. We're actually trying to promote that program, but it, it doesn't allow, it's not allowed for teachers or administrators unless it's in a school with 350 students or less. So most of our schools don't fall in that category. Only about 20 of our 87 schools fall in that category. So while they could still conceal carry at their own discretion, they can't be part of this Guardian program under HB 40 unless they're in a smaller school. So we have actively promoted that. We, we're paying a $5,000.
That TBB?
That we don't know. It's on this section. I apologize, the lighting on this is awful, but we don't know what this was going to cost us when we produced this slide, but it's about $2.5 million that we have to fund to be able to pay for these stipends for these people to carry a concealed weapon on our campuses and provide that security. And I absolutely anticipate the next fall, you're going to see signage on our buildings that say, if you will come into the school, you could be approached by armed security.
That's good.
Yep, as a detractor, right?
Just also a reminder that one of the things that we have is a really, we're really concerned about making sure that we can attract quality educators. And the type of people who go into education are not the type of people who want to use a gun to protect their children. So we have this other thing that we're balancing out where that issue is concerned, that we got to make sure we aren't turning away people who are like, oh, look, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be armed security from the profession, right? So there's this, there are so many pieces that go into it. They're tricky.
It's a little frustrating. The, the, the challenge is not in our secondary schools. We have agreements with most of our allied police agencies and we have our own police department to be able to provide coverage, police, actual police officers, school resource officer, trained individuals to cover our, our secondary schools.
You see that.
But the law requires us to provide that same type of coverage in elementaries. And there's, there's 54 elementary schools that need to have armed security. And I don't want to just pay somebody to walk around with a gun in an elementary school, right? I want somebody that can actually provide and improve academic outcomes for our kids who might be carrying a concealed permit.
Right, that's the option I'm bringing up.
Yeah.
Is that there's no need to pay somebody or require all teachers to be holding a gun if they choose to.
Right.
But if, if a active shooter is aware that this, this school district is not a gun-free zone, then they're not going to bother. They're going to go where it's a gun-free zone.
Absolutely. And I have actively promoted in television interviews, if you come into a Granite School District school, we have the shortest response time in the state in terms of our police being able to get to any school in Granite School District. It's between two and two and a half minutes. The average allied response time, meaning your normal police department, can be anywhere between four to seven minutes. So we patrol and have officer resources within a minute to two and a half minutes of any school location in Granite School District because we know we want to be able to respond to those. We actually had a weapons violation on this campus. A kid brought a, allegedly brought a gun into the parking lot area. And so that created a situation where we had to do a protocol and keep the kids in the classroom while we searched for that weapon, right? And we had a very vigorous police response and I'm very grateful that we have those resources in place, but it is very expensive, right? So we'll wrap with the meeting. I just want to say thank you, first and foremost, for coming and spending your evening with me. I know you probably have better things to do, go on a date with a spouse, go out to dinner, do some other things. You guys are on a date. I want to brag on one more thing here. I want to show what we're able to do because we're Granite School District and we do this really well. We are not, some of these places you're talking about that have two or three times the perp pupil expenditures that a place like Utah does, Granite School District has some of the lowest administrative costs in the nation, all right? It's less than three-quarters of 1% of our entire budget, okay? So when we look about trying to push resources to our classroom, I want to reassure you that the money that you're sending to us in your precious taxpayer dollars, the vast majority of that funding is getting down to the classroom level where it belongs. So thank you for your tremendous support. We wanted to offer this support, not just to our parents, but a chance for our actual taxpayers to come and have FaceTime. You can call me or email me anytime. I'll write my phone number up here. She wrote my email already, but I'll put my phone number up here as well. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have additional questions and I'll get back to you as soon as I can.